We're coming out of executive session. We are all in the record.
I move to proceed as discussed.
Good morning. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second in the public. Everybody in the background, we're on the record. All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn.
Yes.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
All right, it is nine o'clock and the executive session has ended. We're going to wait five minutes so technology can roll it over into, or do they not need five minutes?
Um, probably not.
Okay, Commissioner Corn, I'm going to disconnect with you and you can, you're online.
Don't be that.
Bye. All right, thank you Judge. You don't have to stay. Are we ready now?
Yeah.
All right, it is nine o'clock and we are here for the Tuesday business meeting. And at this time, we will begin with our invocation.
Father, we thank you for a new day, a day that you have made. And we thank you, Lord God, that you have given us faith to live by. It's available to all who would ask. We just thank you, Lord, for your presence with us today in these deliberations of our county officials. We thank you because our hearts are filled with gladness. And we thank you for your provision for every need for us individually and for our county. We just bless you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, please follow the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the order of the agenda.
I move to amend the order of the agenda by removing the district court and B O C C items.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion from the public on this item? All right, deliberation by the board? Do you want to just explain?
Yeah, so the, the district court item was just addressed through executive session. So it would become redundant. And then our two B O C C items, we're going to wait for additional information to come forward. So that should be on a future agenda.
And in part, there's, it's not a lack of recognition from the board on what the desires of the public were. It was wanting to have better communication with Mayor Connolly, who wanted to offer more information to us. So we're trying to be respectful of having put out a request for information and allowing that person opportunity to give it to us. And just to be clear, our district court item was agendized correctly. It was just duplicated on this agenda. It was a correct executive session for which we voted on. Anything from you, Commissioner Corn?
Nope.
All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Clerk Rosedale. Or consent agenda, sorry, consent agenda. Commissioner Corn, Commissioner Corn, do you want to allow Commissioner Donkey to just read everything and then use second it so that, since you're online?
That'd be great, thanks.
Great.
You got it, Commissioner Corn.
Thank you, Brian.
Agenda, based on the information before us, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on the consent agenda? Hearing none, deliberation by the board?
None.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes. All right, now we have Clerk Rosedale.
Okay.
And it's voting day.
It is. Before I get started, make sure all of you get out and vote. Today is election day, so everybody has, almost everybody has something to vote on. So get out there and vote. Okay, Commissioners, before you, I have claims batch number thirty-two totaling one million, one hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and seven cents. The big ticket items here, um, the external auditors with sixty-eight thousand. Road and Bridge for Culvert spent sixty-five thousand. The assessor's office spent twenty-three thousand in contracted labor. The solid waste actually has the lion's share. They spent about eight hundred thousand dollars in heavy, heavy lifting. And then we have sixty-eight thousand dollars in self-insurance administration.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Clerk Rosedale before we proceed to a motion?
I have none.
And then, yeah. We also had that, the other solid waste item was the vehicle purchase. So just verifying, that was probably part of your total.
It's solid waste? Which one?
Seventeen, forty-nine, seventy-five, and seventy-seven. I believe those are both associated with a special containerized truck.
Yeah, the solid waste. We have one hundred and sixteen thousand for vehicles, solid waste. You have four hundred and forty-three thousand for long haul. Ninety-six thousand for long haul. Fifty-nine thousand for contracted labor, and then just rest of smaller ones.
Yeah, those two line items then would have been in the, that you had summarized. So that's part of that roll up. Thank you. Good.
Anything further? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve payment of fiscal year twenty-five claims in batch number thirty-two, totaling one million, one hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and seven cents.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners, and everybody do vote.
Up next, we have Sheriff Wheeler.
Planning.
Planning, sorry. I keep skipping after I jump. This final plan is a.
We, uh, we misspoke.
Sorry, I misspoke.
Sorry, you're right after.
I crossed you off. Hey, don't go all the way back.
On deck.
Right here.
Regarding final plat on short plat file SS zero-four twenty-four, Crazy Estates. The reference plat is requesting to vote, to divide one thirty-acre parcel into two ten-point-zero-one acre lots and one ten-point-three-two acre lot. Property is owned Ag Forestry ten. Project is located off Reader Bay Road. Bonner County owned and maintained public right-of-way in section twenty-four. Township sixty-one north, range five west, Boise Meridian. And the lots will be served by individual well, individual septic systems. And preliminary plat was approved by Bonner County on March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
All right, questions from the board on this item?
Based on my review of the documents, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Corn?
No questions.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the final plat of Crazy Estates. Planning file number SS zero-zero-zero-four dash two-four. And authorize the chair to sign the final plat.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Hearing none, deliberation by the board? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Now, where are you?
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheriff Darryl Wheeler for the record. First item before you is renewal of the contract with Kless for querying and appointments at our Sandpoint driver's license. The cost for renewal for September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-six is three thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. The Bonner County Sheriff's Office has enough funds in it in line item zero-three-four-five-oh-dash-seven-eight-six-oh. Sheriff's administrative expenses and eight, nineteen hundred and eighty dollars. Line item zero-three-four-five-dash-six-five-two-zero. Sheriff's admin dues nineteen hundred and eighty to cover the purchase.
All right. Any questions from the board for Sheriff Wheeler?
Sheriff, just curious how long this software has been used?
We've used it for a year. This is, yeah, this is the first.
Last year was the first.
Correct.
Gotcha. So you then therefore satisfied.
We are so satisfied, our customers in the county can sign up and actually plan their vacation and sign up weeks ahead of time for an appointment. It's, it's worked out great for staff and for also the constituents, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any questions from you, Commissioner Corn?
None.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
And I will just state that it's, the required addendum is included in the contract for everyone's reference. So based on that, based on the information before us, I move to accept and approve the contract renewal as presented. I further move for the chairwoman to sign the agreement document administratively.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the public on this item? Seeing none, deliberation by the board? Only comment, you did budget for this already in this budget cycle, didn't you? You budgeted a cost renewal?
Yes, we didn't have the line item. If you look, we pulled out of administration. Um, I think typically, most people know that, um, our individual line items don't fund every line item that it's supposed to. For instance, training, we have ten thousand dollars for patrol and obviously, ten thousand dollars is not going to meet the requirement to pay. So we, we use our driver's license, we use, uh, we used, uh, money from our administration to fill up the other half of it.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes. All right, next item?
Okay, the next item is, uh, Bonner County Sheriff's would like to purchase a drone for the General Pacific Incorporated in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. County Sheriff's Office has adequate funds in the following accounts to purchase the drone. Fund number zero-three-four-five, five-four, uh, dash eight-five-nine-zero. The sheriff's search and rescue equipment of seven thousand dollars and, and account number zero-three-four-seven-two-dash-nine-three-nine-zero. Sheriff's capital vehicles, ten thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Does the board have questions for Sheriff Wheeler on this? This is an item that we pulled from consent to have a discussion on, so, Commissioner Corn?
So I do have a question. I'm, I'm wondering if the sheriff knows that, uh, the DJI company that they're looking at purchasing this from is a Chinese company and they actually have ties to the CCP?
Totally aware of that, Commissioner.
You are aware of that?
Totally, yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Don? Do you have a follow-up, Commissioner Corn?
I just have concerns, uh, because even though I kind of looked into this a little bit and had a friend of mine look into it, that is a drone manufacturer. And even though that DJI denies that they're a military drone manufacturer, uh, it looks like it's pretty obvious that they have that capability. So I'm a little concerned that we would be purchasing that as a government agency, um, not knowing what the pitfalls might be on that.
Okay, Commissioner Donkey?
Sheriff, I wanted to confirm, when it comes to budget consideration, if I understood correctly from, uh, the other information that was provided from you, seven thousand dollars of the budget, the search and rescue portion where, this drone was intended to be purchased in a prior budget year but was delayed, and so those funds were carried forward.
It had nothing to do with the budget year. It was a fundraiser, uh, by a local physician because they knew, uh, the person who passed away and died up at Switzer. So there was a fundraiser that actually took a couple of years raising funds. And the only amount that we were able to make, to raise were seven thousand dollars, a little over seven thousand dollars. And that went into the search and rescue fund. And, uh, for the last two years, those funds have just rolled over because they were in, in, uh, success, they were, um, they were not part of the county budget and county funds. They were private donations.
Could you at a high level describe a little bit of the intended potential uses for the drone? What the, what the benefits would be?
Sure, the high level is, um, primary, the number one priority for this is going to be search and rescue. The reason our, our drone team chose this one, because it really met the needs of, of the sheriff's office and primarily for search and rescue. We did not have a drone that has thermal capability. And when I say thermal capability, it has a camera that, that it will read the temperature of, of bodies that we're searching for, uh, both in the snow and both up in the forest. And, um, and it reads those so that when we're searching. I know that, uh, there are other capabilities as far as the, the battery life. There are other accessories that we found that were needed and that were going to be beneficial for, for the search and rescue in the sheriff's office. I think I pointed out in some of the emails that statutorily, the sheriff is required to be in charge of search and rescue. And we are required and mandated by state statute to search, uh, for those that are lost and endangered. And we have had over the years, even since two thousand and twenty-one, when they had, we had that fatal, uh, ski accident. We did not have the tools to go search the mountain for a thermal image of, hopefully, somebody who's still alive that we could rescue them. And also in two thousand and twenty-one, those capabilities were not available at, with Switzer. And they have since purchased their own drone, uh, that they use for search and rescue efforts up on the, on the mountain. Unfortunately, when we get calls, we have to be activated and have the drone team to be able to respond anywhere in the county. And we cannot depend on driving, you know, an hour, half hour up to, and get a, a drone that's, that's being used by, that's owned by another company. So, um, for public safety, for the ability for us to find and search, uh, those people that are missing. We had an incredible increase in Alzheimer's patients, people, uh, with other, um, inju, other injuries and, and other medical conditions where we are forced to go out and search for these people. And having this tool at our advantage is going to be crucial for the success of finding these people before that they succumb to the, to the, uh, conditions out in the weather. We're also going to be using them for crime scene investigations. When there's, when there's times where we have to get a search warrant for that, we will get a search warrant so that we can search those areas. But allows us to go into, uh, the crime scene and take pictures, digital pictures and, um, and complete and improve us our investigative services that we provide to the county. When we have callouts for our emergency response team, our SWAT team, there are instances where we can utilize in public land in different places, uh, that's not prohibited, uh, by law, that we use that, uh, for reconnaissance for, uh, the SWAT team, to find out where the buildings are, if there are people hidden. And another advantage now that we have the thermal is we can see if people are hidden. Just recently, there was an incident where a police department, um, had an active shooter and they were able to locate, um, a person under a tarp. And they were able to isolate that person and take that person into custody and avoid that person from going and escaping and becoming a greater danger to the public. So we, we have several areas that we can use that piece of equipment. And it's just like anything else, our, our Penn scour, or our, um, Lindscott Bearcat, um, our firearm, any other tool. It's just a tool that the sheriff's office uses. And, um, as a chief law enforcement executive, um, it's, it's important that I determine what kind of tools that we need at the time and that we have the budget. And obviously, we had funds in there to pay for this. And, um, another caveat to this is we had been studying this for, our team for two months and, uh, found out that with the new tariffs, that the price was going to double if we didn't pull the trigger and, and purchase this drone now. So, uh, in essence, we're, we're saving that same amount of money by not having to buy it, um, in the next budget year. Those are just some of them. And I know, uh, under Sheriff Lake Wald is the one that personally oversaw the drone team and looked at all of these. So he has more probably experience if there's more details that you know. But that's kind of a overview of why, uh, we think it's a necessary tool to have, um, at the sheriff's office.
Can I ask you to explain to the, the community about the account itself and how it came to be? Because this was a lot of donations from community members.
Yes.
Regarding specifically search and rescue and specifically when the incident occurred, um, with the snow. And so when we're talking about money that's in your budget, can you provide some distinguishing of, uh, taxpayer money versus people that donated money specifically for this type of item?
Sure. And if you indulge me, I can, um, I kind of summarize this in, in your email that on January twenty-sixth, twenty-one, Switzer Mountain Resort requested the sheriff's office to assist them in locating a lost skier who was twenty-seven-year-old Riley Hating. Search and rescue responded and didn't have the drone with thermal detection capabilities. Neither, neither did the result. There was an extended time in locating the skier who was ultimately found deceased the next day. And, um, Dr. Soren Espersky, um, formed a partnership with the sheriff's office to raise donation, uh, so that the sheriff's office could purchase a drone with thermal capabilities. And what happened is, um, he spearheaded this, uh, with us. We put it on Facebook. Uh, we put it in the newspaper. We, we requested funds from, from the community, from businesses to donate towards this purchase because we knew that that, that was very expensive. At that time, we were actually looking at a drone, um, a different drone that was larger and it, and it, the cost was about thirty thousand dollars. There's been an evolution with the drone companies, and this is one that was more affordable. And so we use those funds, as I said earlier, we rolled those funds over, uh, the last few years, I guess, three years now, uh, so that those funds could be used and dedicated to assist us in supplementing, uh, our, the cost in purchasing this drone now. And as I said earlier, it's imperative that now, uh, especially with the, with the tariffs happening, we have an opportunity to still, uh, purchase this at the old price. And they've held that on for us for another week, uh, so that this could be approved by, on budget.
Do you have further questions, Commissioner Donkey?
I don't. I will just say that as a former search and rescue volunteer looking for missing persons, that unfortunately, one mission that I was on, we did lose someone because we weren't able to find them in time. They succumbed to the weather conditions. So, um, I could see this being a valuable resource for the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
So I want to.
I have a couple of questions.
Can, uh, Commissioner Corn, you had questions about, uh, the, the origins of the drone itself? And I think I heard Comish, or Sheriff Wheeler say that Lake Wald is more intimate with the drone itself. Do you want to ask him your questions, specific questions about it?
Uh, no, not specific questions about the drone. I've been fielding questions from the public. Um, and their concerns are that law enforcement has these type of tools. I think it's great that search and rescue would have a tool such as this. And this is where we run into one of the problems when search and rescue is, uh, within the sheriff's office. So now it becomes a tool for both, uh, the sheriff's office and search and rescue. But people are asking, uh, obviously, the sheriff's office, any law enforcement agency requires, um, a warrant or, uh, something to go on to someone's personal, private property. With the drone, it, does that kind of surpass those requirements where you can do surveillance on people's private property without any search warrant or anything like that?
So let me have, uh, Bill Wilson wants to answer your question, Commissioner Corn.
Okay.
Hey, Ron, can you hear me okay?
I can, thanks.
All right, great. Yeah, the law in Idaho is, we have pretty strict restrictions on what drones can be used for, including the restrictions on law enforcement. So yes, law, um, uh, warrants are required. And actually, even my, my, um, analysis of that statute is that it might even be over broad, too much. But it, it actually goes further than I, um, as far as it possibly can go to protect individual privacy rights. So, um, no, it can't, even if it's a law enforcement purpose, it can't just be used for blanket surveillance. And warrants are generally required and you're not able to fly a drone or an unmanned aerial vehicle over private property. So we do have pretty robust protections in place, um, for the concerns that people have about drone usage. And it's actually originated, I believe, um, from property owners in southern Idaho, like, um, large ag operations where PETA and other entities were using drones to fly onto their property and surveil them. So that was, that is what prompted a very, like, a strong response that prohibits people from using drones for that purpose.
That's great information. Thank you, Bill. One other question for the sheriff. Are you guys still utilizing the air force when you guys need the flare capabilities? Is that still a, a resource?
Yes, uh, we can only use that, uh, for, if we can confirm if the, the victim is still alive. And we also are utilizing two bear air. So we have those two resources at our fingertip when they're available. And depending on weather, conditions.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions to the sheriff before we entertain a motion? All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve the purchase of a drone for the Bonner County Sheriff's Office in the amount of seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and zero cents.
Second.
Did you, okay, we'll leave it that way. There's a motion and a second. We'll open up for public comment. Teresa Heisner.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Teresa Heisner, Bonner County. I have a question. I, I personally have concerns purchasing any equipment from, that has any affiliations with the CCP. It's a known fact that they spy on Americans. I was wondering what the price difference is on an American-made drone or a different manufacturer? Is it a couple thousand dollars or is it like ten thousand dollars? Thank you.
It's at least double or more of the price.
Okay, that's a lot. Um, but I'm, I'm going to say I'm against it, but I understand that we need good equipment for our EMS. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
William Martin, Bonner County resident. For the record, I am in favor of this. I do have a question. Sheriff Wheeler, is there a possibility to add, during the wildfire, that this might use to give assistance to the fire department? One, for the management of the fire, uh, as it's going, especially considering, uh, the Palisades Fire, Pasadena Fire, the, uh, Paradise Fire, uh, I go on with additional fires. The other, would it also be able to? The other, would it also be able to utilize, might, with your department, utilize the police with the fire service and might people that may not have evacuated or may have gone away on foot for that?
So, what I think I heard you say, and say yes or no, because you are difficult to hear, is you're wanting to know if this drone can be used to assist the fire department in wildfires flying over to determine situations for them? Is that what your question was? Did I get that? Kinda?
Close enough.
Close enough.
So, to answer that question, it could be available for that if there is a wildfire. The teams come in and they have their own drones that they do the assessment. So, we'd just be duplicating that request if that's the case. And then, also, there's a conflict normally if they've got flying, if they've got equipment flying in to put the fire out, they really need control of the airspace. So, we can't just go in without supervision and coordination with the fire, with the fire agency. So, yes and maybe and yes and no, so.
There's coordination with restrictions, so, okay.
And I do enough studying on this. And with the use of the drone and your search and rescue, that would primarily be used then when search and rescue is going out into difficult areas to hopefully pick up a heat signature from a body or person that's, you know, tired finally or that they are still continuing to progress in whatever direction.
And the answer to that question is yes, you're correct.
All right, thank you.
Any further public comment on this item? Spencer.
Spencer Hettings, Bonner County resident. This thing's too low. Just for general information for the public, I don't know if you guys are buying the DGIs that are assembled in the U.S. or, because they have two products that got one made in China, assembled in China, and it's kind of, you know, what people would worry about. But I think the ones you guys are probably buying are the ones that are assembled down in Cerritos, which is not one of those ones that people should be worried about getting spied on. So, Otel Robotics and DGI both make drones in the States so that sheriffs and other departments can buy them and not be worrying about China spying on us. So, I don't think people need to be concerned about that.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, deliberation by the board on this item. Commissioner Corn.
No, I don't really have any deliberation. I still have some concerns, but I don't think I really have anything to deliberate on.
Okay. Donkey?
This one has a lot of people having public comments. I'll just open it up for it. A lot of people have said their comments and it has actually focused on the China aspect of the drone itself and the concern of the data potential. And I think that that has been addressed by the sheriff's office and Spencer's comments because there are two. There also is the issue of people had questions of the price tag. They thought $17,000 was a lot of money and felt, and I had the same question of, did we, where did this come from? Because I remembered hearing about drones a while ago and I thought we already bought a thermal. But then, after seeing your responses, this is a continuation of that same communities born effort, because that's what this drone was. It was a community-born effort to address the need for a thermal-capable drone. And so, that addressed that issue for me. The price tag is high, but it wasn't, this isn't born out of our budget in the way that I think when people first saw the price tag, it was, this is really about half of it is donations and maybe a little bit more than that when you combine it with some things and other funds that got put into search and rescue. So, I do understand the questions, but hopefully, this meeting answered the two big comments that we had, which were China and the price tag. And I've gone through, as people are still emailing me saying, "Don't buy a China product." Maybe they'll email a different thing now. And then, the cost of it is, was born out of donations. So, with that, I'm prepared to make a vote on this particular item.
Yeah, I would agree. We understand the funding sources and the history. And I think it's always appropriate for people to ask the question about the origin of materials and trying to understand that. That's also a very large ball of yarn to unwind, depending on what we're talking about, from cell phones to other items. But it's good to ask the question and get some background information. So, I appreciate that aspect of it, but I'm prepared to move forward.
All right. With that, roll call vote. Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
Motion passes. Next item. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, Bill Wilson, for the record. And before you, I have two items today, both of them technology-related. The first one is a discussion decision regarding the renewal of our Westlaw contract. And Westlaw is a search function used by attorneys to do legal research. And it's something that we, is an essential part of our function in the prosecutor's office and every attorney uses it basically every day. We have had Westlaw in the office for as long as I've been here, for over a decade. And it's my responsibility to make sure that the contract is renewed for the next year. Right now, we pay just a hair under $4,000 a month for that service. The renewal rate that has been quoted to us is $42.50 and 20 cents. So, there's roughly a $275 increase per month for that contract if the board does choose to renew that. If we went ahead with it, we would have our existing rate through the end of this budget year and the new increase rate would take effect October 1st. So, asking the board to approve that contract renewal and ask the chairman or the chairwoman, excuse me, to sign that administratively.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Bill Wilson?
Do you want to start with Commissioner Corn?
Commissioner Corn.
Mr. Wilson, I do have a question. Are there any other comparable products, software products that have been looked at? Do you know if there's anything else available that could offer a better competitive price?
There's one other product in the market called Lexus Nexus. And we, within the industry, there's, attorneys have to do one or the other. And so, once you're kind of in that ecosystem, it's almost like Android versus Apple. Trying to switch that would probably be met with a giant revolt from the attorneys in the office because we're just not familiar with the way that that function works. So, we are kind of dependent on this environment that Westlaw provides. We do actually have a smaller contract with Lexus Nexus to provide a public-facing terminal at the library. And I think you guys may remember, we've had that renewed in the past as well. So, we have a relationship with Lexus. But as far as using it internally, all of the attorneys in the office are trained to use and use Westlaw every day. So, I didn't quote Lexus for this product for that reason.
So, when do you have to make a renewal decision by?
I think the claim or the rep told me that it needed to be done by June.
You have time, because I always, I like to be able to say, "I know why I picked this one." Because if I'm a member of the public, I don't want to just hear preference, even though there is actually an argument for you slow down your ability to research because if you're making a change because you guys have grown used to Westlaw. If it's a difference, that's not that big of a difference, then I can understand the argument. But if there were a big difference between the two, you might say, "Does the county need to..." It's not, as a whole, it's not that big of a cost. So, I hesitate only because we have, if you've watched, so Commissioner Donkey and I have been doing budget talks yesterday. And we've been requiring people to drill down on justifications of what we're spending in a way that the county has not been doing before. And in the spirit of what we have been doing, the answer that we have been giving is, tell me why outside of preference that I'm going to renew when there is the competitive aspect of it. And that's my only, that's my only issue is just saying, "I didn't look at the other one because I'm used to this one." Has a hard sell from a public entity unless I can say, "Well, it was 250 bucks and we're used to it, so I'm going to waste money changing."
To that point, as far as comparative analysis goes, I admit, yeah, we didn't do that. But as far, under a previous, a previous employee in my office used to be responsible for managing this account. And at that time, it would have been a couple of years ago, we paid more than, I think we paid like $6,000 a month for this product because it had all kinds of additional bells and whistles, different modules that had been self-selected for that. So, when I became responsible for administering this account, I went and went to the claims rep and we looked at each individual module that Westlaw offers because as a legal search tool, it can give you additional enhanced search privileges if you want that, right? So, we had at that point, like the Cadillac version. And I decided with Lewis that we didn't need some of those services anymore. So, although I didn't compare it with Lexus, if it does make a difference, I did, like I said, went through that process and shaved a couple thousand dollars a month off of the bill that we were previously paying for this. And so, I can tell you guys confidently that we are, that has been carefully looked at. And I've had those conversations with this representative. So, I've been trying to be diligent.
I agree with what you're saying. I think that because if I'm on the opposite side of this table, what I would have wanted the answer to have been then, that one's 6,000, this is 4,000. This is a better option and we're used to this option. But we wouldn't have need, I think that that's the cost comparison because we're talking about, a lot of people are saying our budgets are hit by tariffs and different things. They're wanting us to do our due diligence, which includes a compare-contrast. I don't disagree. I think the outcome is going to be that Lexus Nexus is more expensive because I've used that system on the west side. Washington and Oregon use that as theirs. And they have way more stuff to add into it, which ends up with, you can choose a package that costs more. But for comparative analysis, if it's roughly the same, I don't have an issue renewing. I just like to see if there's a competitor that we brought forward both options so that when we're telling the community how we spent their money, it isn't just based on what we would like to see, but we're doing, because this is a budget question. We're saying budgetary, why? And then you make the argument that says, "Well, it's $500 more, but this is from an office standpoint that we're selecting, asking you guys to pick what we want versus what might be cheaper." That's, that's kind of my view on just budget items in general that have competitors where we don't compare.
Okay, I'm happy to, I mean, like I said, I do have a contact with Lexus Nexus, so I can reach out and ask for a quote. They do it by account. So, they'll typically have, you know, a certain number of attorneys and then they impute an additional amount for paralegals and other people in the organization that need access to the service. I can do that. I can't guarantee that, how long it will take to get that quote back. And I also can't guarantee that if we have to bring this back for renewal at a meeting after the deadline that was provided, if we can get the same number. But if it's, I'm happy to do whatever the board, you know.
I say it that way to ask you, what if this was the option? What if the board voted on it on a contingency that makes it so that you don't have to bring it back, but that you have to show the evidence that we have the other quote? And so that we don't have to do a whole nother discussion, but that you show the compare-contrast between the two? And if we...
Contingent on like a material difference in the quote value?
Correct.
Sure, I think that's appropriate.
Because, and I think for, I think everybody in the county, understanding that this board has been asking for more detail on every spend because we're trying, you know, when people talk about being taxed, everybody, it's making sure we spend what we need, nothing more and nothing less. So, what is the board's appetite before we make a motion on that? That way, we can say to the county, "This is what we selected, but we didn't compare-contrast and this maintains to be the best option." Commissioner Corn?
I always think that's a great idea. One concern that I do have, since it is within our legal department, is it's, we're looking at $4,000. If the other software manufacturer was even half of that, you're looking at $2,000. I'm afraid that if we went to that, it looks like we're saving money upfront, but we're probably losing money in the rears because the price that we paid for 20 people working in the prosecutor's office is going to eat up that $2,000 really fast on a new learning curve and all. So, I do think that is a great practice in general. We should always look at different contractors when we're looking at tools such as this. But in this situation, I do think that we might even go backwards and actually lose money because of the amount of people that are using it and the price of their salaries.
I think that the argument here is that we're, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't think you're changing as much as your agenda item as the practice in the county of if there's a competitor, that we need to bring it forward to the board. I don't, which is why my suggestion is that we move forward with a contingency vote that just says, "Bring that in" so that we're consistent in application of how we approve items. I don't know that it will be less. I just know we have sent budgets back saying, "Well, you didn't show me this part of it." That's, I think, what we're accomplishing. There is a, there's a learning curve to any change. I don't think the argument is being made that there really is a change. It's that we shouldn't just bring the one item if there's a competitor, especially if we haven't looked. And not that we would look every year, but if we haven't looked for a number of time, we should make sure we're doing our due diligence. That's my view on it. Which is why the suggestion is that the motion is that we move forward and then we just say, "Yeah, it was going to be more expensive or not." And then, we make an argument. What is your thought, Commissioner Donkey?
I agree with both of my fellow commissioners. There's the learning curve. If you make a change, has a significant cost and efficiency loss over a period of time. But then, there's also the aspect of, my biggest concern is contractors get, or I should say, contracts get comfortable when they're long-term. And I think price increases, they feel like they have us over the barrel and it's hard sometimes to try and negotiate. So, I like the contingent approach. I think sticking with the software is probably going to make the most sense for the efficiency that's been discussed. I also think it could be very beneficial if Westlaw knows that we are seeking another bid to see whether or not we've truly gotten their best price, just to get a little bit of a negotiating lever into the conversation with them, to see whether or not they might be willing to come back with a little bit lower increase for the contract per month. But, so there, based on that, I'm comfortable with doing the contingent approach so that we don't lose the opportunity. But I think if, if the contact for that account knew that we were not making the decision immediately, if we have a few weeks, then the window here before we have to move forward with signing that contract, just to see whether or not they can sharpen their pencil a little bit would be nice.
And I'm, I'm not saying, actually asking that the prosecutor's office contact Westlaw and tell them we're looking for a different quote because I, I'm just asking for a number that shows and...
Understood. I added that intention.
So, you want...
Yeah, I'd like them to know that we're shopping.
So, that's a new, new thing to tell someone you're looking at a different contract versus just looking and telling. So, you're wanting your motion to include, Bill, telling Westlaw, "I'm going to get a quote from a competing agency"?
I don't even know that it has to be in the motion, but I think it would be a good due diligence.
If that's what the board was inclined to do, you could just have no decision at all. So, that would result in obviously not an approval. And I could just, having been here and listened to the instruction, I can return to Westlaw, let them know that the board is interested in knowing if that's the bottom dollar and also instructed me to get a quote from Lexus. And then, I can bring this back to you guys as quickly as possible. Like, I think we have time to do that. I just want you to be aware, there is the possibility that if that takes longer than we anticipate, it may result in Westlaw having a, we can't approve that now before the deadline that they gave us. We may have to pay a little more. So, there's, there's, there's prone call.
That's what I was trying to address.
But we could come, I mean, we could have it on next week's agenda and make a decision based on whatever information's available at that time if we felt we need to hedge our bets. I've just seen this be very successful in the past with contract negotiation to say, "Let somebody know that they're not the only party."
This is a little bit different for me because it's software. And so, it's... And so it's, I, I just want to know Lexus Nexus costs us? This is why we're sticking with Westlaw? It's not, it's not like a, kind of like a bid type of a contract. It is you, you're selecting which items that we want. And so part of what you end up with in these kinds, it's, well, let's look at what you're actually asking from Westlaw if you're looking for reduced cost because the, so to me, it's just for what the prosecutor's office is asking for, what would Lexus Nexus charge us? And that doesn't need to, a notification to the dealer for Westlaw to know that we're looking at another, what the competitor is. It's just, we just need to know the answer so that before we write a check to Westlaw that we're telling our taxpayers, we looked at both available options. Because in part, I don't want to create, I want another quote, the quote from the other side, but I don't feel like we need to create more work for Bill to say, let, let Westlaw know that you're looking for someone else to try and, because it's not that kind of a contract to me. But what is it that you're wanting to move forward with? And, because I, I agree with Bill, if you're wanting that kind of notification, then end it for next week and then you don't, we don't need to do a contingency. I was saying contingency to lock in the rate so that there's not a potential increase.
I would, I would move it to next week's agenda because then we're still within the timeframe that they've offered.
I think we are.
And to me, it's still a worthy conversation because every contract is a potential negotiation.
That would be contingent on both parties getting quotes back to me by this time next week. I think they probably could do that, especially if I just bump it after the meeting today and say that there's a, there's an element of urgency to that. But I can't, that's outside of my control. So if, if they didn't give me a quote by then, I just have to let you know we're not, don't have enough information.
And I don't see that being significantly different than the contingent decision anyway. I mean, we already have a price.
It would show that we have done our diligence at least, we're trying to.
At this point, I think in this type of situated contract renewal, the price can only get better or else it doesn't change. It doesn't, it's not a, I just, I've, I've seldom seen any kind of a service contract where there's not some level of negotiation or variability within whatever the prices. Most of the times when you balk at something, you get a discount.
Well, we, we did this with Adobe and that's, well, that's why we shifted because there was no, no change. So the question for the quote is for Lexus Nexus. We have a quote from Westlaw. So we're, do you want to just move it to next week and then see what you come back with then, I guess?
I do, but I want to make sure I'm, I'm being responsive to the, to you. Does the board want me to stick with the Westlaw quote and just leave it as, and then only compare that to what I can find from Lexus? Or would you actually prefer that I reach out to Westlaw and see if there's any possibility for movement? They might just say no.
Right, absolutely.
They are like, just like Adobe, they're a giant company.
Sure they are. I just, like I said, I, I've seen where with some companies on contract renewals, they have, they have a range within which they can work.
Okay.
I think it behooves us to just let them know that the, the board was, is looking to see whether or not it's possible for them to provide a better price. And they're looking, they want to consider all the options instead. I just think that's in our best interest. If they come back and say there's, there's absolutely no, no adjustment available.
Okay.
And we have the information, we can make a decision next week.
I can do it.
That would be my preference.
Okay, all right, so.
No vote required then, I guess we'll just.
We'll do no vote required, but I will let the community ask a question on this agenda item because it was there and there was a lot of discussion about before a motion was made. So any public comment on this? All right.
Red Hearn, still a Bonner County resident.
We're working on it.
Whatever service you guys come up with, I hope they're comparable so that the public and the taxpayer has equal access to, to what's, what's being researched. So there's not a different level.
They are different levels.
They are different.
They are different levels. So what he's asking for is just the service that's in the prosecutor's office. The public access is on Lexus Nexus at the library.
I understand, but whatever, whatever level.
They're not the same level.
They should be.
Any other public comment on this agenda item? All right, seeing none.
Okay then, no vote. I'll go on to the next item.
Yep.
All right, so the, the next item should be a little less controversial. It is also software, but it's one that we're seeking a notice of non-renewal for. This is a product called Logical, and it's one we've had for only one year. And it is software product that is designed to assist in e-discovery and also for our purposes, public records responses. When we initially decided to purchase this software in a prior year, we were kind of inundated with public records requests based on just many different issues that were ongoing at the time. And I'm happy to report that we no longer have the same volume of records requests that we once did. And so therefore I don't, I no longer believe that the value that we, or the money that we pay for this software is, is worth it to us. And so that contract had an auto renewal provision for October 1st unless we give notice of intent to not renew, and that needs to be done like 90 days in advance. So we still have plenty of time. I just wanted to get ahead of that. And we will just be no longer needing that service, saving that money.
I want to say, I appreciate you looking at it because that's one of our things to look at is all of our contracts and making sure we're buying only what we need. So thank you. Any questions from the board on not paying for something?
You want another quote?
I'm good with that, thanks.
All right, all right.
And we can ask the other company to match this company. All right, any public comment on not paying for something? All right, hearing done, discussion by the board, roll call vote.
Would you like the motion?
Oh, motion, yeah.
Based on the information before us, I move to transmit a notice of non-renewal to Logical before the contract renews for another year.
All right.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comment from the board? All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill, for standing up there.
Thank you for not spending money.
He was trying to cancel two things out, but we didn't let him do it that way. All right, you're up.
Morning, everybody. Mazzola, Parks and Waterways Director, for the record. Item number one, we are looking to close out the Garfield Bay Park grant. This was a grant for getting new picnic tables and benches. This was awarded a few years ago. I'm just taking it over and trying to do the best I can. For those who have been down to Garfield Park, you can hopefully see the benches and picnic tables and the new ADA concrete pads. The guys worked very hard, had to hand pour 14 pallets of concrete due to timing of this, which is also why we're here to close it out today because today is the last day we can close it out. And also part of that grant was installing a fence down there. We omitted that part due to, once we found out the reason for the fence and then the reason why the fence had gone missing was basically due to the way the snow plowing occurs in that area. The snow comes off the roof from above and knocks the fence over. It was a bad use of money. And the reason for the fence was to try to keep children from running across the road. So a better use would maybe be some signage, a slope. Also, the fence was going to cause more maintenance in the long term. So the state recognized that and they omitted that part of the grant with having to do the fence, which only really leaves to do the benches and the picnic table. So we accomplished that goal. The state's happy. And we're just looking to finish this one up.
All right. Any questions before we entertain a motion? From the board, Commissioner Corn. Commissioner Donkey?
No questions. Thank you for pulling all of this together for closure. I can see it's a very extensive history of documents. I'm sure you had fun reviewing it.
It was very fun.
In order to determine what remained to be done. Within, and I appreciate that you guys were able to work essentially off-season to get the concrete poured. And that's a much more strenuous method of pouring that many yards of concrete. So appreciate you making that happen.
Yeah, I can really just thank the maintenance crew. The maintenance crew didn't complain, didn't anything. And originally, the grant was written for a pumper truck. Unfortunately, with the timing of everything, the ground is too soft to get a pumper truck. So once again, hats off to the maintenance group, just 10 out of 10 as far as dedication to the county. So I think you guys are really getting a great bang for your buck with this group.
All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
Based on the information before us, I move for the county to approve the closeout of grant RV 24-1-09-01.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any public comment on closing out the grant? Seeing none, deliberation by the board? Hearing done, roll call vote.
Commissioner Donkey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Corn?
Yes.
Excellent. On to item number two, very exciting, Dog Beach Maintenance. So Bonner County is currently maintaining Dog Beach. Dog Beach is over by Long Bridge. Previously, from what I understood, is it was maintained by the city of Sandpoint. Somehow through time, they passed that off to the county, because they, they did. BNSF Railway, that is actually their right-of-way, that is not a Bonner County space. So when some kind of weird verbal agreement happened where we started doing the maintenance, there's no contracts for us to do that. And although I know the public loves Dog Beach, there are, you know, there's no existing agreements for us to maintain it. It does cost us roughly $6,000 a year in maintenance to maintain Dog Beach. That's just including labor, fuel, time, everything else. So I guess the discussion will be is, do we continue to maintain something that costs us $6,000 a year that is not ours and we are in no legally binding contract? Or what we'll do is we'll enter into a legally binding contract to maintain that, although that does come with some caveats. So, and we weren't aware that BNSF was going to get back with us this quick, so this is why it's just discussion and not decision today. But essentially yesterday, BNSF got back to us and they are willing to lease us the land and enter into a formal agreement for us to maintain that area. Now that's going to cost $1,500 just to apply, followed by a $4,500 annual contract for us to keep that space legally.
And then clean it also?
And then also clean it, yeah. So we're talking like 10 grand a year. And then also I reached out with risk about this.
See, contracts can go.
Yeah, we talked with risk, with risk about this. A, like we need a contract if we're going to keep doing this. Also, we're going to need railroad insurance. We're also going to need permission to be on their property. Also, if something were to happen, we might be on the hook for basically maintaining something that's not ours. So all good reasons. And then I discussed with Bill as well. Obviously, if there's no legal obligation to maintain Dog Beach, then why are we spending county dollars and taking the risk to do so? So that's what I have is basically if we keep moving forward with Dog Beach, we need an MOU and it's going to cost us approximately $10,000 a year, or we will cease maintenance.
For me, I think this needs to come back for a decision. Because we are trespassing on someone else's property and it's not our property and Parks and Waterways is a tight budget. I think you did a really good job catching that. I think that the, we definitely, the budget of Waterways is a fee-based budget that doesn't allow for that kind of flexibility. And I think it's interesting that they wouldn't want their spot that they'd charge us. I thought arguably we were seeking to be paid to maintain their property, not to pay them to maintain their property. So.
Public access is expensive.
Yeah. So we have learned, right?
Yeah.
So what are your views on it?
I think we should immediately cease and desist from doing anything on that property because we have no legal authority to be there and we're just assuming liability by doing so. And then yes, I think the board should have a decision here on a future agenda to make.
And you put it on for Tuesday? Because we're not, because we don't want to have, I don't think, you don't want to put your hand in somebody else's pot like that, that we don't have, so I.
I mean, if the community wants to rally behind it and help fund it, I think it's a different consideration. But at the moment, we don't have the authority to even be there, so.
Or if BNSF wanted to donate their property to the community.
And that did not sound like an option based on.
It didn't sound like that's the direction.
Yeah.
Because they actually need that right-of-way. And I, I think that the, it was already questionable to maintain someone else's property out of your budget.
Right.
Which is what you brought it here for. And then to say, sure, thanks for noticing it, now pay us more to have access, I think it's the wrong direction. Commissioner Corn, before we go to public comment on this item?
Yeah, the only thing I got to say, I guess, is I'm going to assume that we are trespassing if we continue maintaining this park without a right-of-way.
I would say you can't even clean someone else's property if it's not yours. Can you just go and mow someone's lawn?
They understand that we're doing it. And so if they haven't formally told, I mean, it's implicitly, they've allowed us permission to be on the property in order to continue this. They know we're there. So I don't think it's that, I wouldn't characterize it as a trespass. But that's not to say I support it. I, I fully, I advocate, we should not be on there without some sort of formalized agreement. But I don't know if we're breaking the law currently because they, they know we're there and they're allowing us to be there.
Do they know we're there or they have now said, now that we know you're there, it costs you $10,000 to be there? So I think, I mean, it could be an assumption that they know what we're doing versus we're just doing something and it hasn't been opened because that's, I think they just told us, pay us $10,000 or get off of our property.
Yeah. And, and kind of what brought this to light was this winter, there were some maintenance issues with exposed live electrical wiring and some lights. And so the city of Sandpoint reached out to us. They said, Bonner County, you need to fix this. This is dangerous. I was like, okay, well, let's look at the contract we have at BNSF and see what our maintenance obligations are. Obviously, always trying to be responsible with the money we have, of what little we have. And realized after reaching out to BNSF, we have no contract. So this is why this came to be, especially as we were picking up the maintenance season. It's summer, grass is growing, plenty of dogs being walked. So yeah, important to, I guess, next week, make a decision.
What, you want to do it? No, I was pointing to plant or facility. She came in, I wasn't sure if she wanted to mow. All right, so let's open up for public comment. Mr. Dupree.
John Dupree, who lives in this county. Couple of questions for you. This is a little off-the-wally kind of thing. Did I hear you say that that property actually belongs to the railroad?
Uh, yeah, it's BNSF right-of-way.
All right, that's another language to me. Yes or no, does the railroad own that property?
I would assume if they have legal obligation and they have right-of-way, then I would assume that either they have a right-of-way from ITD or.
Bonner County does not own that property.
That part I got.
There you go. That's, that's the better answer. I don't, I don't know because I'm just trying to process this as fast as possible.
He's, he's trying to be technically correct because they can have a right-of-way and he doesn't want to overstate because he found something.
Well, that, that's a precursor to my next comment. And that is, has anybody talked to the railroad about doing a wonderful community gift to the county of that property so that the county can own it and therefore have a legal right to, to take care of it? Otherwise, hey, it's all your problem? We're out of here, goodbye.
The railway needs it. They need their right-of-way.
Yes, they do.
No, that's what the issue is, is they need, it's not something that's going to come to Bonner County. It's just whether or not they would let us mess with it. Wayne?
I will quit with comments. There are many people out there, the public, that go abandon or apparent abandoned properties and they do it at their risk. And all enforcement. They don't want to do anything.
Wayne, you're in a bad, bad spot or you're far away from the speaker.
I, I am close. And it could be. And it could be the internet out here. The, I, I appreciate finding out that we don't have any legal, and for the liability, I think that we should not be doing anything there. If the people that utilize it, and we have in the past, want to continue to do that, that, you know, people either come up with a fund, or they use it at their own risk and injury to themselves and/or their animal.
Thank you. All right, any further comment on this discussion item?
I'd like to say something real quick. I think Mr. Dupree brought up a great comment. Can we ask the director to look in to see who actually owns the property?
I...
Not just the right-of-way?
So, from my understanding, from the contracts I looked at with Road and Bridge, Jason helped me out on this one, is ITD owns it, but BNSF has a right-of-way through ITD.
So, is it possible to get another right-of-way from ITD? Because I know that multiple utility companies and such have right-of-ways through properties for gas lines, electrical lines, water lines, and all that.
Well, we wouldn't be necessarily, I guess, acquiring a right-of-way. What we'd be doing is, we'd be entering into basically an agreement to take over their right-of-way, just the maintenance of. We wouldn't really be acquiring anything.
Would that be worth a short conversation with ITD to see what, if there's any options there?
I could look into it, but basically, BNSF controls that space, even though it is ITD's, and that's, that is, from my understanding, the legal agreement. So, no matter what, even if we go through ITD, we would still have to go through BNSF, which they're looking to lease that space to us, or not necessarily the space, but just enter into a $4,500 a year contract to basically have the legal ability to maintain that space. It's, so if we, if we do get, say, a right-of-way access from ITD, we are still going through BNSF.
And it still results in an increased cost to his budget? And it increases insurance and risk liability, so with the county, so it's not, it isn't that the county would become the owner of that?
Right.
Right. But my only concern is, is, does BNSF have the right with their right-of-way contract with ITD? Do they have the right to lease out or to sell a right-of-way to another entity? I'm just wondering if they even have that right of contract with ITD to do that?
They're not selling it, they're not selling it to the county. Their inter, if, what they're, so, did you, I, I thought that all of your BNSF stuff was emailed.
Is emailed?
Yeah.
He has new information.
Can, can you, no, because...
There's a great shot of that house.
Well, no, it's trying to, it's Commissioner, Commissioner Corn, it isn't, it's that essentially the option for the county. The question is, does the county want to look at paying additional money that exceeds the $6,000 maintenance to enter into a formal agreement to maintain someone else's right-of-way for public access, which then includes also insurance related to it? There isn't going to be a change of the situation that exists between the two groups. It would only be formally getting involved, which then would formally increase what we're paying. And so, if we're not going to do that, the discussion is, do you then say, do nothing, continue status quo, but know that you've been noticed, that you need to enter into a formal agreement with an increased cost? That's what he's asking.
Yes, and I understand that. It was, my question just comes from Mr. Dupree's concerns, that we're dealing with the BNSF, and they're saying that they will sell us a right-of-way, or whatever it is, lease it to us on a yearly basis for $4,500. I wonder if they actually have the right to do so?
So, from my understanding, Commissioner Corn, is, they do have that right, which is why we would go through BNSF for this and not ITD. And we aren't gaining anything, all we're doing is basically getting legal compliance to continue mowing their grass, which in return allows public use in space in a clean fashion.
Perfect. Thank you for that answer.
Any further public comment on this discussion item?
Two-for-one deal. John Dupree, resident. It seems to me that we're spending a lot of money for a very, a small group of people for their dogs to do their thing. I personally, as a taxpayer, don't really want to fund all that money and all that liability and everything else. I think it'd be a lot less expensive for the county if we made a couple of signs saying, "This is not county property, enter at your own risk, and if you have any questions, contact those who own it."
Thank you. Mr. Martin, round two.
I mark to the record, Bonner County resident. Evidently, this city of Sandpoint knew something about this when they threw it to the county, in my opinion. And I'm not sure that it is actually the county's responsibility to put a sign up. I would think that that would be BNSF or IDT to put signage up. But I, I agree, I don't think that we should be spending the money and the liability for that for a small number of people that utilize it, even though I know there are people that won't be happy with the same. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will close discussion on this discussion item. So, did you want to say something before?
I just want to clarify, so, good comments, I think, about signage and so forth, but I believe the reality legally is, the county has no authority to install anything on that property, because we have no legal right to maintain, modify, or in other way, control that land. So, if ultimately, the county chooses not to enter into an agreement and take on any responsibility for that land, then we could suggest to BNSF that they do something, but we can't force them to. So, it's just, I think we have good suggestions, but we need to make sure that we stay within the bounds of our legal framework of what we can and can't do there.
And I, I will preface this, is, I did talk to BNSF about the option of basically a zero-sum agreement, where they would lease us the legal rights to maintain it in return for public access in a clean space, and they were not interested in a zero-sum. It's basically $4,500, take it or leave it.
That's good clarification.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep. So, I'll, I'll make a memo for next week, and we'll, I guess we'll let you guys vote on whether to cease maintenance. And in the meantime, do we want to continue mowing and picking up down there, or do we want to cease maintenance as of today?
I think we need to cease.
So, you didn't put it as a vote from the board?
Okay.
So, can I ask you to have a question of a single commissioner that is listed as your liaison as to what to do until next week? Because you can't ask, not in this meeting, though, because this is the board meeting, because we, you put it as discussion. But on future, what you can do on an item, is you can actually just call it action discussion decision, and that way, it gives the flexibility of if we want to, in real time, say so.
Yeah.
But since it wasn't, it wasn't listed as a decision, we can't give you a decision as the board to say cease, because then it, then it wasn't noticed as a vote.
Sure.
From the board. He can give you direction.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, District One.
Okay, so, public comments, conversations, concerns, as well as my related focus areas are, as of last week and going into this week, now focused on helping to answer public questions about road maintenance and where their road might sit on a current schedule, and working with Road and Bridge on those questions. Also, following up and preparing for the future board meeting, based on last week's board conversation and the presentation that came about HB 180 that has to do with broadband and cell companies, and what authority the state has now granted them in excess of what they had previously. So, this has become a challenge for our county, for those who haven't heard. So, we're going to be looking at possible modification of our county ordinance associated with telecommunication tower siting. So, that's something that, that law goes into effect July 1st, so we're, we're going to be playing catch-up now as a county with how best to help protect our citizens with this change in the rules at the state level. Also, getting a lot of input and feedback right now from some engaged citizens on our land division process and helping to provide background and input as we consider how to modify that part of our ordinance in association with the MLD moratorium. Also, had questions come in from time to time with regard to zoning violation letters that people receive in the mail. So, just to help people understand, at times, zoning, planning zoning, the department of the county can become aware that there is a potential violation. That's happened, where somebody has something, built something on the property that is not in compliance with county code, with the zoning regulations. And then, that's an opportunity for that person to go and speak with the planning department personnel and provide clarification and determine whether or not, in fact, there is something that's out of compliance, that requires follow-up. And usually, the simple cure is to go through the permitting process to get those things done correctly. But, it's also possible that such a letter may be an error, there may be a misunderstanding of what somebody thinks is a violation. And so, I just want people to understand, when they get that letter, the best course of action is to contact the planning department, and that information is included in such a letter, and just go through and have a conversation with them to better understand what the concern is that they're raising, and then clarify the situation to see if any corrective action is necessary. But, but again, folks, get those letters all throughout the course of the year. You never know when, when might show up, if there's a concern, and so, the best thing you can do is have a conversation. And continuing to work on reviewing the current proposed comprehensive plan, land use component and map, so that we can come together as a board at our next meeting and discuss more about whether we want to adopt the current proposal or make changes to that before adopting it. And then, we have, as Commissioner Williams stated earlier, initiated budget workshops, and so, it's really a matter of us trying to dig into the background of understanding why each line item in a budget should be funded. What, what is the purpose? What is the need? Where does that come from? How do we better understand and define the value associated with it? And so, that's a team effort, so that we can drill down into and have those conversations early, so that folks have a chance to go back and make changes and come up with a revision to their proposal. So, it's a good back-and-forth conversation. And so, if no one's been observing any of those public workshop budget meetings yet, hopefully, you'll find that you value the fact that we're asking more questions and we're looking for more detail. It's not a witch hunt, we're not trying to find a problem, we're trying to confirm that there's a need that we can quantify. And then, we can look to that as the proposals come into the board. When someone stands up at the podium and says, "Please approve this expenditure," we want to be able to look back and say, "Hey, we see where that was planned for and fits within the budget." And there's a limit to the level of granularity that we can reasonably get to within certain budget line items, but the overall intent is for us to be as reasonably responsible as possible. This is going to take multiple years, multiple iterations, to make changes to a process that has been done differently for a very long time. So, but hopefully, folks will see and appreciate the intent, and then, you are welcome to come to those public meetings and observe and see what we're doing, and then you guys can speak to us, you know, between these budget meetings as well, and offer input as to the process that we're using, so... That's what I have for this week.
You going to take questions?
I'm sorry, I will. Does anybody have any questions on any of my items?
And Wayne, Wayne switched from Oren Martin to Wayne Martin, so that might be Susan Martin, but...
We'll see if the audio is better.
Wayne Martin.
Hopefully, the audio is better.
And that's it.
Bad thing about having multiple meetings going on. Since Commissioner Donkey brought up roads, I do know that he drives Dufford. Striping that was done last year on Dufford in many areas is very poor or nonexistent. And I'm sure that that is going to be looked at by Jason Topp, at least I hope that it will be. And in regards to the budget hearings, it's been very interesting going through and listening to those. And I appreciate everything that, you know, you folks have been doing in looking at the budgets and asking for clarifications and all. And I appreciate the attempt to save as much money for the county that you have been doing, or at least having the different departments look at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin, I can say that with regard to the line striping on Dufford Road, that is on the schedule this year to be repaving, and as a part of that process, they need to re-stripe. And because it's a high-traffic-volume road, the, the current method of line striping does wear off quickly due to the amount of plowing it gets, and then just the traffic when people go over the line. So, that goes back to a decision we made a few weeks back with awarding the line striping for this coming season. We upgraded, as folks will recall, we added glass beads to the water-based paint. We know the water-based paint is not a highly durable product, but it's much more affordable from a budget perspective. Adding the glass beads, for as long as they stay, which will, will be an experiment to see how, how long they have, what their longevity is in place, but that'll add a reflective material, so that those lines will be more highly visible when it's dark out and when the overall conditions require better visibility. But it also creates a wearing surface, so it's a hard surface that should allow the paint beneath it to last longer, and again, that's part of our experiment. So, we should see a great opportunity over the next year to see how that holds up on Dufford, because of the level of traffic that we have on that road. And Director Topp also mentioned that they're planning to do a small test patch of what I'll call, for lack of the full official term, epoxy paint, the non-water-based paint, the more durable paint on an area of Dufford that tends to have people travel over the center line and create a lot of wear on a, on a bend in the road. And so, that'll be a good test subject case to see how that works out for durability. It was just, the cost was so much higher that it's, it's hard to anticipate that we would be able to do that county-wide if we thought it ended up being a good product. And there were other considerations that went into whether or not to utilize that type of paint, because it also requires mechanical removal before you can pave over it. So, a lot of different factors that go into that, but I think, from a safety perspective, there'll be re-striping on Dufford this summer, and then, it'll become a great test case. So, a year from now, we can have the conversation again as a community and say, "How is, how's that line striping holding up? How does it look?"
Thank you, Commissioner. I did not realize from the previous meetings that, that Dufford was going to be restripped this summer with that, that or those products. So, thank you for that update.
Absolutely.
Your question summoned Jason upstairs, so I want to make sure he doesn't want to add anything on Road and Bridge, because he was online. Are you good?
The director could correct me if I misread anything.
Chip sealed Dufford this year, so it'll be striped on October 27th.
He said, did you hear him, Wayne? Chip sealed Dufford this year, and then, striping after. All right. Any other questions for Commissioner Donkey? All right, with that, District Two. Issues brought to my attention, one of which is, community-placed AEDs by Bonner County. And so, this came up because the ambulance district, after so many years, you have to replace the batteries. So, it is, it is not reasonable that it comes out of the ambulance district budget for the community-placed AEDs, but we're trying to work with emergency management, because they helped with the grants of those, because the community centers are coming up on the period when those things need to be renewed. So, if you reached out to me about the cost of the batteries and leads, because it's over $400 when you hit your, you need to do the new batteries, we are looking at how we're... $400 when you hit your, you need to do the new batteries, we are looking at how we're going to work with the community centers that received them. So there's more to be heard on that one. If you got to hear our commissioner chat this morning with jury commissioner, one of the reasons we did that discussion was we wanted to get information out to the community because there's a discussion thread in Sandpoint about how people are chosen for juries. And there was a fun fact that I did not know was that once you are no longer on parole in a felony, you can still serve on a jury. That was something that I did not know. And I was like, are you sure? And he was like, yeah. So it was actually very detailed with a lot of the information that a lot of us need to hear. One of the, the two takeaways were if you've been pulled on jury duty within two years and you got it again, there is a transition to a different electronic system. So all you have to do is let him know that you served within the two years and he'll address that issue. And so be okay working with the jury commissioner. He's a department of one. He tries to make sure he's hearing the concerns. There is some duplication in our system. We are about 55,000 residents in Bonner County with a 60,000 to 80,000 people in that electronic system. So it is at random. Some of the things people commented on were, I keep getting picked, but my husband never got picked. I don't, it's, it's completely random. And so that, that was one of the takeaways. I think one of the, the heartwarming takeaways were sometimes we get cases where they are very difficult, not just on the staff, but also on jurors. And so he did explain services that they offer to jurors to include counseling for different types of cases that you may have to sit through. And so I encourage people to have that conversation. If you get pulled into jury duty, you can look at that video. It's archived online, which was what he was wanting to do so that you have the resource of the slide deck so you can see how to go through the jury process. He does give you a disclaimer, but that, that there's a request that we changed to another platform. But in our benefit, our jury commissioner is being asked from the state to help identify what that system would look like. And so our next commissioner chat is with Wire Idaho. That will be next Tuesday regarding cell towers. And I'm sure that since Ann is in the audience, she might be saying something about that. But last year, we did a Wire Idaho discussion with commissioner chat. This year will be an update that's inclusive of a rule that has changed. So one of the other things I want to point out to you from my view on budgets, if you watch Commissioner Donkey and I sat in budgets yesterday and risk was by far the biggest budget that we looked at yesterday. And I want to make sure that people know that we owe a huge thank you to Christian because it is a painful process to deal with a new process when we're going line by line by line and holding accountability. So we are equally need to recognize that it is a changed position of the county staff to have to be held to a different standard in real time online. And so please be mindful of that as you guys are watching a budget discussion and give some grace to a new process where you have a board that is addressing the herd concern of the community of how we're doing budgets while equally the transparent aspect of budgets because you have an employee that is put on the stand of going back line by line. And Christian did a very good job of trying to answer questions in real time, as did everybody that participated. His was probably the longest one that we did yesterday. And in some regards, when you look at it, it might look like we were going one, two, one, two, but it wasn't on a work product. We're trying to change how we do budgets. We're trying to be better at recognizing that we need to give more information to the public as to why we're putting so much in a budget. We should be putting exactly what we need, nothing more and nothing less with the recognition that there is an element of a budget that we cannot anticipate. So we have to provide precautions in those areas. So please be gracious when you're online and you're watching the process because these are staff members that are, for the first time, being asked to be very detailed in a budget process. And we started this early on. Usually you wouldn't see these workshops for a few more weeks. The reason we did it this way was to give more time to be able to say, these are things we'd like to see. Now can you go back and bring more information back to the board? If you have questions or concerns, it's okay to participate. It's okay to send questions. I just want to be mindful that social media is good for some things, but it can be an unhappy environment and easy to get sucked into being negative and unkind. And I would just like you guys to be mindful about staff because we're trying to do our due diligence. And so our next big budget review is going to be EMS tomorrow. We're starting that one at 9:00 AM and then we're going to go into their 11 o'clock meeting. That is a highly visible budget. It's a district and we want to do our due diligence with that as well. But again, be, it's okay to be critical. I'm not saying don't be critical. I'm just saying present it in a respectful manner and be mindful of our presence online. Planning is working on our area of impact. There are some areas that are remaining to have turned in the information to us. Old Town, Priest River and Spirit Lake hearings are, we have to schedule hearings. And so we're buddying up on, my number got called for jury duty at the end of June. So we'll know more as we get to the end of what does that actually look like? Because we're coming into Board of Equalization, we're doing budgets, and then now having a commissioner that could potentially not be available will impact our scheduling. And so the answer I learned today is we won't know until we get there, but to keep checking. So I appreciate the patience. My focus is the financial aspect. It is not lost on me on the fair. We are working through what our interface is, I'll use that word, from the Board of Commissioners. We are very conscious of the concerns regarding budget and spending. We're trying to extract that information that hasn't fallen by the wayside. Because of the statutes regarding a fair, it does present a little bit of an obstacle in communication at times, but we're trying to work that through. So for those of you who have had that as an email to me, it isn't for a lack of trying and we're working on it. But I want to keep making that statement about the fair because some of you are interested. I'd also like people to be okay giving feedback on, as we put new members in, we've got, I think, a good amount of new members that are addressing concerns the community has put forward. Be okay letting us know if we're headed in the right direction. I'm going to note that once we get a little bit of a slowdown, one of the things that the community wants us to address is when we're doing planning, commission or boards, why can't we open that interview up? And so last week, I wasn't here Thursday and Friday because Thursday I had to vote on the county or the Panhandle Health budget, which included the county's portion of it. And so I, just because I cast the vote, I don't take it as the chair's vote. I take it as the board's vote. So our board did not support the budget that was put forward by Panhandle Health. And so there were some key reasons why. One, one of the biggest issues had to do with clinical services and what does Bonner County get? There, there is owed recognition for Panhandle Health Director in hearing the meeting that we had the Monday before the vote and hearing our concerns. And they actually went in and actually reduced their overall budget down by over a quarter of a million dollars. And it was a interesting discussion because I did have to call Commissioner Donkey because I was like, I was there by myself. Nobody showed up because I argued for Bonner County's position. And I ended up kind of landing on, if not for Bonner County being okay asking these questions, you wouldn't have seen that $250,000 plus reduction. We asked the questions that had them go back and take a look at their budget. So I want to give credit to Eric for hearing our concerns and actually making adjustments. The adjustments from Bonner County Board, not a single commissioner, was not enough to cast our vote for it. One of the things I said in that meeting where we had to change was Bonner County has two people that sit on that board and we need to have them coming to our county quarterly, giving our updates. We also need as a county to be telling Panhandle Health what we want. One of the biggest costs that they have is clinical services. We as a board have a consensus view on pulling services from private industry into Panhandle Health. We as a county receive one day a week in our county. And so we're in, we're at a growth pattern where we're kind of, we're the second largest, but we're not large enough that the services are getting pulled from Panhandle Health our direction. But we're large enough that our over half a million dollar contribution is beneficial to the smaller counties that do have those services. So it is an awkward spot. So we need to elevate the voice of what Bonner County needs out of Panhandle Health. And so that was the communication that I put forward. They were agreeable for the most part to hearing that as the, the voting members of that particular budget. But I do want to say as a coordinated effort, our county needs to be heard more at Panhandle Health level of what our direction is. Because one of my comments was at $500,000 plus dollars for what Bonner County can say we receive, we could put that money in our budget for our residents and I could have more tangible results with it. This is a district of the top five northern counties. So we don't have an option not to pay, so don't mistake that. We do have to cut this check. So when we come by budget, we will be paying Panhandle Health. But when we move forward, we need to make sure our voice is heard of what do we want that to be and how do we start holding more accountability for providing services? In that same vein, I personally, and I think collectively as a board, believe we're going the right direction by reaching out. So I've been big on mental health in Bonner County, working with Knessy Health. We have been good at identifying what our needs are and attracting them to Bonner County. It's better to have our services. Increasing private industry here is better than growing government. And that's our direction. And as our board, that has been our position. So if you recall, Dr. Wassif gave an update of we've increased by 11 therapists in our area, which was one of our needs. I think that's the right direction to go into, but I also think we need to be able to identify what are we getting for our money? A good part of what Bonner County gets service from Panhandle are essentially, there's elements that we don't pay for, but a large part is what we do pay for through our septic permits. So that was also brought up to Panhandle Health. So I did express the position of the board and the community members with respect to Panhandle Health at that particular meeting. On Friday, I participated with voting for the, we needed two magistrates to be seated. It was a very open process and it was completely public. And you were not just going through someone's resume, but a lot of comments. And it made me renew the idea of why are the planning and the workshops and the people that volunteer, why can't they be more open? It's not a job interview and it's a selection process. And if we're advertising what the selection process is that allows us to, at least at a minimum, the community didn't get to ask questions, but they got to hear the answers. And I think that there, that warrants some openness from us to review. We're not, in our meetings, we are asking questions about the decisions that they make for the commission or the board that they want to sit on. So why can't the public hear those answers? Because it will allow for more transparency and community understanding of how decisions are made for the planning commission, the zoning commission or, or a fair board. So with that, I will close and open up for any questions for me. And I'll call you, everybody that called about an AED, I will call you back. We're just trying to see where we can find this money from, trying to find grant money from somewhere. So, all right, Mr. Bowman.
Good morning. Dave Bowman, Bonner County. So I'd like to touch on two different things. One is that I've spoken on in the past that you brought up, and I don't understand why you're continuing this process of having these interviews of people that are asking to be on boards and commissions in executive session. It's an absolute misapplication of the law because they are not, it's classified. You put it in there and say, well, it's an, an HR thing, but it's not. And I, this is, I asked for my own interview to be done in public when I was denied to be put on the zoning commission. And I was denied being able to have it in public. The questions and the answers should be for the public. It's not, I don't, I don't understand what the problem is. And it, it needs to be addressed and this board needs to act on it and go by what the statute says. And if you have, I mean, I just, I just don't see why this keeps coming up in conversations and discussions, but it doesn't change because it needs to change. It's a disservice to the public and to those who want to be on these commissions and any decisions that get made. These are bureaucratic positions or they answer to bureaucrats and it needs to change. My other question was regarding the ambulance district. I haven't looked at the agenda for tomorrow's meeting, but I believe that on it is going to be a presentation by the ambulance district's attorney in what the options are going forward for how this district is, whether it sticks with the, the current form, current structure or whether it gets formed anew and all of those things. With that in, if, if that is the case, with that in mind, wouldn't it be prudent to wait until after that to be looking at their budget? Because it's, it's certainly going to play into their budget. That's all I have. Thanks.
I want to, can I respond to your first part? Because I do, I have been researching it. And so part of what has been the opinion on some of these boards is that because they have terms, that there's an element of an employment right associated because when they're appointed, they're given a term. And so that's where the research is happening right now is, is in addition to because of the term. So for example, on the fair board, the understanding from legal has been that because they get a term, that they have every reason to expect those numbers on that fair board, that if the board, for example, were to say, fair board member, you were in there for a four-year term, we're not going to give you the four-year term, that there is an element of employment law that we would have to follow. That's, that's where we're getting clarification. So it is not for like a ball drop. It's trying to understand, that's the, that's where we're hitting the answer of the executive session hiring because of that element that's tied to it. So I am actively working on understanding on the other commissions of what those options are. But that's what it has come down to is each of these boards and commissions have terms assigned to it. So even on, and some of them will be two years, some of them are four years. That's where, that's where that's coming from. I don't disagree with what you're saying. It's just that element that is being considered employment law is trying to be addressed to understand, does that mean that? And here's my question on it. So I'm posing the question of, does the fact that we would have to potentially treat it as if you were going to essentially terminate someone from their board, does the fact that they would get the employment, is that where the executive session would happen? But the actual hiring for the board is not really hiring. It's just appointment of the board and then you get that right. That's what I'm trying to get clarified. So I know it doesn't answer the fixing it instantly, but that's part of the comment that has been made on that.
Well, I, I just, I can't under, it makes no sense. They're not employees in any way, shape or form. There's, it's not a contract. I mean, there's a term, but it's an appointment. So I, I don't know who's giving you that opinion, but I think it needs to be tested by someone maybe a little further up the line or whatever. It, it makes absolutely no sense.
No, I just want to make sure I give you what I have. Mr. Martin?
Still a county resident, Wayne Martin for the record. I agree with Dave Bowman. Interviews for committees, commissions should be open. And then the decision which the commissioners make should be private. Whether you hear from the citizens that might be hearing the interview, that's, you know, something you guys get to decide. On AEDs, I know you've brought it up before about Edgemere Grange needing one. And I don't know whether I should come in or the Grange come in and talk to you or Bob Howard on trying to get bumped up. The Edgemere Grange is voting locations for the county. We do have a large percentage of people that come in to vote that are elderly, although young people can also have heart issues since we just lost one in our county, in our area recently with a heart issue. So I would like to sort of help push, elevate that. An idea on the battery so that the county or the ambulance district isn't totally responsible would be that those organizations, facilities that receive a, an AED have to have a matching amount for that battery replacement. And you can, you know, any organization can set up something that way. And whether it's a 50/50, a 40/60 or whatever, I would like to offer that as a suggestion. Thank you.
All right, Wayne. And we'll, I'll speak with Bob on... All right, Wayne, and well, I'll speak with Bob on a Grange. We've been placing them in community centers that have a higher frequency of use. I don't believe we've done Grange, but I will reach out and then get back to you on that. Christina?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. Christina L. Nicholas Anderson, for the record, Bonner County resident. I'm going to actually respectfully disagree with my friends Dave and Wayne on the open interview process, only because, as much as I'd like to listen to other people's interviews, I'm not so sure that people would be as open in their interviews if they knew there was an audience. I would want the interviewees to be as open with you as possible and give you as much direct feedback. And I don't know that they would do that if there was a room full of people, particularly if they had people in the room that weren't fans, so to speak. Although I know some people would be more open if their fans were in the room. So I'd just like you to consider both sides of that. I do think the public has a right to know who's applying, but I don't know that it should go beyond that. So that's just another piece of food for thought. The other thing I'd like to comment on, of course, and I'm going to sound like a broken record, like I usually do, and that is the fair board. I guess I wonder how many months we're going to continue to pay out $5,000 a month on this treasurer before we require that something be done? I know that the word is they're checking into other options, but do we just let them check other options for six months, $30,000 down the road? Or do we say, something needs to be done, or stop now, or what do we do with that? Because it seems like the money's just being endlessly spent when there's other needs that that money could go to? Or is this just a legitimate expense that needs to continue being paid at that rate? I guess those are my questions for you, if you're able to answer them. Thank you for your time and thank you for everything that's being done in the county.
Thank you, Christina. And your concern isn't lost on the board. We have to get that understanding because we are there autonomous in a way. So it's, we are in a disadvantaged position with respect to that particular payment. My last communication with the chair of the board was to provide us with another, it was another request for an update, to be inclusive of the job description that they were creating for the person, so that we could have some response as to the change in that rate of pay. But it doesn't change that the continual payment of those, that benefit is happening right now. All right.
Can I, can I respond to that, Asia?
Yeah.
Okay. I know they were going to come to the budget hearing and ask for $40,000 this year instead of $20,000. Will that be considered when you grant or don't grant that additional monies, the fact that they're spending this and haven't responded to your requests?
I can only give you my opinion on budgets. And I can tell you that everything that I've seen in correspondence from the fair is going to be taken into consideration with a request for additional funds from the fair. And it, and what they're spending and how they're spending money. Because once we hand money over, the county isn't in charge, especially like the payment that you're referencing, it's not coming out, it's coming out of the other fund. And so the county has control to, of one side, but not the other side. And so that payment is not something we can impact. And so those things, for me as an individual, are going to be considered. And it, I know not everybody watched yesterday's meetings, but I think that you, I think the community would be pleasantly surprised with the shift of holding ourselves as a board accountable for understanding where we're putting money, because the directors just present something. We are going through it line by line and that won't be any different. And for me, as a commissioner, the review of what the fair asked for has to have that same level of detail, if not even greater, considering the limitations that we have with kind of oversight on some spends, if that makes sense.
It does. It's just a matter of, does it come out of pot A or pot B? It's just like when they have the jackets. The bottom line is, it's still being spent. But I understand what you're saying and I appreciate the explanation.
Understood. All right. With that, we'll move to Commissioner Corn. Is he still on there? No, oh, no Commissioner Corn. Commissioner Corn has left the building. All right, public comment. Nobody has public comment? Reg Crawford. I was expecting someone to say something about MLDs, moratoriums, or something. Unmute.
Can you?
I was going to say, you have to come in if you don't.
Hi, Reg Crawford, Bonner County. On April 25th, I submitted a really simple public records request for some minor land applications. The MLD is requested, had actually been requested in a previous PRR, but for some reason, they were not included. On April 29th, I received confirmation and informed the delay was because it went to the Planning Department's spam account. I communicate with the county a lot via my email, but I understand things happened. I was told the standard answer that it would take 10 days. 15 days later, I emailed asking for an update and was told it would be completed in the next two days. It was not. I contacted planning again yesterday, three weeks after the acknowledged submission. It was told my request required staff report, staff support and would be worked on this week. And when I asked what the holdup was, I received no response. Again, this was just a simple quest for the minor land applications, not the entire administrative files. I'm confident that this request should not require a month. In fact, recently, the Planning Department did a count of all the parcels created using MLDs per year, and the requested MLDs were included in the count. So they clearly have them at their fingertips. I also understand the Planning Department is understaffed right now, but again, this should still not cause this simple request to take a month and extra staff to fill. I can't help but feel that my request is being intentionally stonewalled, because as it turns out, one or more of the missing MLDs may be involved in a lawsuit. Director Gabel has recently stated that, quote, "If a case is ongoing, then those records cannot be released until the case is closed," unquote. I disagree. I reviewed the Idaho FOIA laws and I do not find any exclusion that prevent records from being released for open cases. I have been impressed with this board and the positive changes in deliberation, risk assessment, and transparency. And I did think we were past the era of holding up or stonewalling PRR requests. Please advise the Planning Department to fill this and all PRRs in a timely and transparent way. Thank you.
Reg, before you get offline, have you visited the site that shows the MLDs that they've updated and what you requested isn't there?
This is from 2019. Last I checked was a couple days ago and I haven't checked recently.
So Commissioner Domke is, you're picking a year that's off of that list. Okay, Commissioner Domke is the liaison for planning, so he is emailing the Planning Department about your request. It looks like the archive only goes back to 2021 for MLDs. So when you're responding, I would encourage you to copy Commissioner Domke. That way, there's that second person on there and sometimes that can help prevent a spam, a spam email. But he'll work to make sure your issue gets resolved, okay?
Thank you. He was copied on the original request and on the return, or yesterday's request.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Bowman.
Dave Bowman, Bonner County. Again, I just want to follow up on what Reg Crawford just spoke to. I've been working with her on a, on a lot of this stuff. And while there is no direct, clear-cut evidence available that Director Gabel is stonewalling on behalf of people who used to be, let's just say, associated with the Planning Department, Planning and Zoning Commission, et cetera, there's really no other plausible explanation. She's, even just to ask for the applications, not, not the whole file, just the applications, that were, how do I say, they were skipped over, and Reg will correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I don't think I am. They were skipped over in the earlier public records request, which did go back to 2019. And I believe that we're referring to the Mountain Homestead, and Mike Williams is in the room, he can speak to this, if he would like. Just the application, it's a public record and they have it on hand and in the public records request, applications before and after these were included. So, you know, if it looks like a duck and it walks like a duck and it talks like a duck, it's probably a duck. And this is, this is just some of the shenanigan stuff that goes on with MLDs, which is why they need to be done away with. And I want to point out something too, I will speak to MLDs in general. It's interesting to note, and Scott Hearn in the public, the Bonner County Republican Central Committee, has been hammering on how we should have MLDs, but I would like to point out that MLDs take decision-making power away from elected officials who are put there by voters, and put it in the hands of unelected bureaucrats. And in our case, those who aren't even actual planners, don't have planning credentials. And so, it's interesting that those who keep screaming, you know, "My freedom and my property rights," want to take those powers away from elected officials and put them in the hands of appointed bureaucrats. That's all I have, thanks.
All right. So we're going to go Teresa and then Wayne, and then we will move into executive session because Road and Bridge is next.
Teresa Heisner, Bonner County. I agree with Dave with the MLD debacle, which has been a nightmare, it should have been done away with right after it was implemented. I do want to say that everyone should pay attention to the Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 103 by the Local Government and Taxation Committee. This committee, who Woodward, I believe chairs it, is authorizing the Legislative Council to appoint a committee to undertake and complete a study of state and local land use regulations and the impact on our housing supply here in the entire state of Idaho. I will tell you that this, this committee will go on through the summer, it's once a month, they'll be in Sandpoint, I believe, August 14th. It's an all-day thing, I encourage everyone to watch it, or go back and watch it, or attend. I will tell you that I was shocked and disgusted. Frankly, as far as conflict of interest, Mayor Grimm sits on the committee and he was wearing both his whiskey rock planning hat and a Sandpoint mayor hat. So those of you that think farm and flats is a problem and MLDs is a problem, I really think you better pay attention to this. Thank you very much.
I forgot to mention that, thank you. That was hard to watch. So if you care about planning and development, that was difficult. So, Wayne, and then Michael. You guys got a little bit of wiggle room? Okay. Wayne?
Bonner County resident. Thank you, Teresa, for bringing that up. Yes, it was extremely hard to watch. I'd only planned on a short timeframe and spent more time. And I agree with Dave Bowman on MLDs. With Road and Bridges, I, just clarification, did I understand that after Duford is resurfaced this summer, that certain areas, for testing purposes, will be striped to test the products? Or did I misunderstand that? Thank you.
So to clarify for Duford, so, all of the striping that's done this year, this summer, with the exception of one small area in Duford, will be the same product. It'll be the water-based paint with a glass bead surface. And then, the, what I'll call epoxy paint, for lack of the full, thank you, thermoplastic? Oh, okay, I thought it was a two-part, okay. But the more durable line marking product, which was, I believe, about seven times more expensive, if I recall the bids properly, will also be in a very small area of Duford put down for a test, just to see how the product holds up. So everywhere where you see new line markings happening on county roads this summer, will be the product that has the glass bead added to it. So that's going to be one test scenario, a broad test throughout the county, and then we're just going to have that one small area in Duford for that higher cost, higher quality product.
So I misunderstood when you commented the, the resurfacing on Duford, that will not take place this year.
That will take place this year.
Chip, striping, right?
Thank you.
Michael Williams with the last comment.
Yeah, Michael Williams, Bonner County resident. Yeah, I did experience that same thing. I did a public records request and it wasn't filled. I was, received a blank DVD, or not DVD, but a thumb drive. And I did request it and the people who did construct our subdivisions were employed with Bonner County Planning and Zoning Department, and they were both on the boards, or Bonner County Planning and Zoning Departments. So it would be nice to get that information eventually. I did go get some from the City of Ponderay, they actually provided me quite a bit, which was interesting, because you guys denied having anything, but the City of Ponderay, their information showed tons of information of you guys communicating back and forth. So if I could get those filled, that'd be great. And I'm going on two years, not just a couple weeks for mine.
Okay. All right. It's 11:04 and this meeting is adjourned. Do you need a break?